Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Southborough School Committee meeting to order on Wednesday, November 13th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Four out of five committee members are present, but I'm expecting Mr. Zulik to join us shortly. First order of business is public comment. So if anybody has any comment for the public, please feel free to raise your hand. Okay, no takers. And I'll move on to be new business, principals report. Principal Whitey?
I'm gonna hand it over to Principal Ryan.
Yeah, I'll start and then we'll just go down.
All right.
Go up to development.
Okay.
So a couple of updates from FIN. We were very fortunate to have a visit from an award-winning Canadian children's author, musician, teacher, Nadia Holm. Nadia is well-known for her engaging children's picture books that celebrate diversity, and she brings a very unique perspective to young readers. She was born in Canada, to Jamaican immigrant parents, supports her multicultural background in her experiences and her writing, and many of her stories feature protagonists of color and explore themes of identity, culture, and the immigrant experience and themes of belonging. She featured her debut book about her own childhood experience, Getting Us to Grandma's, a book full of fun historical details, students who are introduced to the world before Google Maps, authentic cultural moments shared by diasporic families, geography, and the route from Toronto to the Bronx and New York, as well as some very interactive song and dance. Last week at FIN, we had an in-school field trip from the Echo Terium, featured program-making waves which showed students how sound and light are created through interactive demonstrations, hands-on experiments, students discovered how sound and light travels through our world and noises, colors, they were able to see how a rainbow was created and how sound travels through speakers. So both of those were supported through our FIN SOS, and I'd like to thank them. They were wonderful presentations.
During the district-wide Wellness Day on November 1st, staff engaged in activities focused on fostering a culture of belonging, belonging uncertainty, and threats to belonging. We began by establishing a shared understanding of what it means to belong and recognize the factors that contribute to belonging uncertainty, especially among elementary students. Staff explored how these factors affect students' well-being and learning experiences, and then identified strategies to counteract them. By collaborating on techniques to mitigate belonging uncertainty, we are building skills to create inclusive environments where every student feels valued and supported. Last Wednesday, in honor of Veterans Day, 3rd grade students in Ms. Hennaberry's class visited the Senior Center to perform a heartfelt series of patriotic songs led by our dedicated music teacher, Mrs. Keys. This performance was a moving tribute to our veterans and brought smiles to the faces of the senior residents. The students' enthusiasm and spirit made it a memorable celebration, expressing our gratitude to those who have served before us. And finally, I'd like to thank everyone who supported this year's Color Run, our biggest SOS fundraiser of the year. Thanks to the hard work and generosity of our amazing Woodward staff, SOS team, and school community, we raised over $21,000. These funds will help provide enriching experiences for our students, from field trips and in-school performances to author visits, science and tech guest speakers, teacher grants, and more. The success would not have been possible without the dedication of SOS and the event organizers, Stephanie Iadice, Kristen Gould, and Chelsea Twelman, and 33 parent volunteers, which equates to one parent volunteer for every five students. We thought that that was a great showing for our school community. Aside from volunteers, nearly every child had a guardian or loved one in the crowd, cheering them on. Thanks to each of you, our students will continue the benefits from this unique and inspiring opportunity.
Good evening. And similar to Woodward, I'm excited to share that our NEARI Fund Run on September 17th was a huge success as well. Thanks to the efforts of our parents, students, grandparents, extended relatives, and friends on our amazing NEARI SOS, we raised over $20,000. This incredible achievement will help us fund exciting events like an author visit we'll be having in early March, field trips, special activities, and 5th grade farewell celebrations. Thank you to our Fund Run Committee, and a special thanks to Erin Bargalini and her committee for their leadership in organizing this memorable event. We couldn't have done it without her and without their support. Also, DJ Mike was there, who brought the extra energy to the day with bubbles, balloons, conga lines, and more, making the experience unforgettable. As a special reward for reaching our bowl 10, lucky students got to silly string me and a few brave teachers. It was quite a celebration, a little chilly. Two other prizes were awarded, and I was fortunate enough to have two principals for a day. Students were able to join me in meetings with our nurse, Mrs. Parsons, to discuss snacks, perform a perimeter safety walk, engage in a budget conversation with Mrs. Pellegrino, a visit with Superintendent Martineau, and Assistant Superintendent Reinhardt, and June on Heart Therapy Dog. Both students had a very productive day serving our community. Also, I'd like to share that since 2004, NEARI students have collected Halloween candy, which was then sent to soldiers stationed all over the world. And last year, the majority of our collected candy went to a local group called Rise Above, which is an organization dedicated to providing Massachusetts children in foster care with enriching activities, opportunities, and experiences. And one of the things that they do that's unique is they send college care packages to Massachusetts students and colleges who have aged out of the foster care system. And many of us have great memories from college days of getting a message that a care package was awaiting them in the mailroom. And so all of the donated candies will help those with their late-night study sessions. This year, we collected many bags of candy, most of which went to Rise Above, some to the troops as well, including our nurse Deb Parsons' son-in-law, who is stationed overseas. The response, like I said, has been overwhelming, and as we know, most children anticipate Halloween so eagerly. So although we do collect our food pantry items throughout the year to donate, having a small amount of their candy donated too makes it really personal for our students. And I am the fortunate one to be able to share Trotter's update. So Gary is pleased to report that both their 6th and 8th grade classes had a successful overnight trip this October. The 6th grade class attended the nature's classroom in hands-on learning experiences that foster teamwork, environmental awareness, and personal growth. Meanwhile, the 8th grade class completed their annual Washington DC trip, which is a cornerstone experience that enriches their understanding of history, civic engagement, and community. More details on these enriching filters will be shared at our December School Committee meeting when Mr. Herschak is present. Additionally, on our recent District Wellness Day, Trotter Middle School staff engaged in a variety of collaborative activities aimed at enhancing curriculum and supporting student learning. This day included dedicated team and department meeting time for curriculum review and updates. A significant highlight of the day was a personal learning session led by Jen Devlin, Trotter's instructional technology specialist, focusing on the integration of AI tools for educators. One of the tools Mrs. Devlin introduced was Diffit, which allows teachers to submit videos or articles into a platform that breaks down the content according to the student reading levels. This tool also translates information into 61 different languages, making lessons more accessible to diverse learners. Furthermore, it adopts content to provide summaries, generates multiple choice, short answer, and open response questions, and identifies essential vocabulary for students to review prior to lessons. This capability aligns with our Portrait of a Graduate attributes by enhancing critical thinking and collaboration opportunities. Mrs. Devlin also showcased School AI, a tool designed with privacy guardrails that supports interactive learning experiences. This platform includes a student-facing chatbot that engages students with relevant content. For example, in the 6th grade curriculum, students can have conversations with Percy Jackson about Greek mythology, or explore discussions with ancient Chinese philosophers. In 7th grade lessons, this tool can be used for MCAS preparation and other curriculum-based activities. The time spent on Wellness Day was highly productive, equipping teachers with innovative tools and resources that they could immediately implement in their classroom. Gary would like to extend his gratitude to Mrs. Devlin for her dedication and expertise in providing these valuable resources to our teaching staff.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions for any of the principals reports?
I do. Not so much on any of the specific reports, but now that we're kind of in November, what's your general feedback on how things have improved with students arriving to school? In terms of transportation, we had a lot of shifting of things over the last two months. So if you could just give some anecdotal, and if you have specifics?
Sure. I would say that the tiered design and structure, at least from FIN's standpoint, has worked incredibly well. The time that our buses for arrival and dismissal is truncated down to probably seven to 10 minutes, as opposed to 35 plus. Hopefully, that's translating over to streamlined pickup time and time, not long time on the bus for our students. I haven't heard that from parents, so I'm assuming that it's a benefit. And to have only FIN students on the bus and not, no offense, FIN, Woodward, and NEARI, I love you all dearly, but it makes a big difference in terms of behavior and in terms of bus expectations. So it's been a big benefit, yeah.
I think for Woodward and on most days, obviously with some outliers, if there's mechanical issues or sub-driver issue, I think that can delay buses. I'm finding that buses are arriving to school on time, giving kids an opportunity to have the free breakfast in the morning or make their way up to classrooms. I am noticing that there is quite a bit of parent drop-offs, and I think some of those cars are queuing up as early as 8:30, which tends to lead to backup traffic on 85. That's something that I've put gentle reminders out there, encouraging people to take the bus, or to at least stagger those arrival times within that drop-off window, because when everyone queues up at 8:30, that line starts to build, and then people are waiting there for 10, 15 minutes. And I know that does impact traffic. Keith and I have been, you know, have had conversations about this. I think it's more visible for Woodward because of our location, as opposed to off of Parkerville or off of, you know, off of the main road where FIN school is. So I do think it's somewhat of a unique issue for us. I think it ebbs and flows every school year, where we find that more students might be dropped off by home vehicles some years, and then other years they're taking advantage of the busing. It's not something that we've been able to completely remedy yet, but it is something that I'm aware of, and we're trying to pull up traffic so that there's more drop-off areas, but it's hard to manage that when some of the families are dropping off so early or waiting for 10 to 15 minutes before drop-off can actually happen.
And for NEARI, our buses have been arriving by the 8:45 bell, if not earlier, which has, similar to Woodward, allowed students to participate in the free breakfast, which has been a positive and a more seamless entry into the classrooms. At the end of the day, we've been cleared by 3:09, 3:10, which is a huge improvement from 3:30 or 3:35. So it's been really beneficial to get them out the door and over to Woodward in a timely manner. I am excited to share that we have more bike riders than we've ever had, so much so that Muriel and Duggan and I wrote a grant the other day through Safe Routes to School for more bike rides. So that's exciting to see. Our parent pickup, and we haven't seen a huge difference in parent pickup, so that's pretty much stayed consistent, but it's been really a positive shift, thanks to Assistant Superintendent LeVoye in making those changes for the bus to arrive and leave on time.
That's right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thanks for the updates.
Thank you. School improvement plans, so hand it back over to principals.
Sure. Mr. LeVoye will be our slide jockey.
Slide jockey, that's quite a visual. While we're waiting for her to queue up, I can provide some context. So the Southborough principals have been working on reauthorizing their school improvement plan. So last year, we were really thinking about what achievements and what goals were achieved through the prior school improvement plan, looking at data and really setting a three-year journey through a reauthorized school improvement plan. So this evening, presenting their work and speaking to the goals they set and the actions that they will be taking over the next year and years to come.
Thank you, Greg. So it is a reauthorization, and as Greg mentioned, our plans are aligned, and as you see, there's a commonality. Slide two. So our goals of our school improvement plan process are really to align strategic planning and school improvement planning processes, both in terms of timing and content. And as Greg mentioned, this has been a continuation of the structure that was created previously, lengthen the duration of the plans, but allow for agility and adjustments during the duration of the plan, which is important, develop a more data-driven improvement planning process, and to create more opportunities for alignment of improvement efforts across all three of our schools. And we believe that by aligning our school improvement planning process, it fosters a culture of continuous improvement, better data-driven decision-making, and a more collaborative problem-solving process for all of us.
So the factors guiding the school improvement plan are Portrait of a Graduate, so that's creating critical and creative thinkers, healthy and balanced learners, creating collaborators, growth-oriented mindset, socially and civically engaged, and communicators. So we looked at those six principles and really wanted to make sure that we're incorporating those into the improvement plan. That was our guiding course. Three of, excuse me, four of the goals that we're going to be talking about tonight are linked to our strategic objectives of empowering learners, equity of opportunity, and healthy and balanced learners. Our first two goals are in the Empowering Learners objective, and then Equity of Opportunity and Healthy and Balance would be the third and fourth goal.
And so the next couple of slides are really who we are as schools. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the FIN school. So we're, as most of you know, a starting point for many of the Southborough families in their educational journey, could be through our preschool program or through our kindergarten. We have approximately 347 students, of which 59 are Southborough preschool students, taking off the Northborough demographic or number, that remains Northborough. We have 121 kindergarten students, 110 Grade 1 students. Our racial identity of our students is as follows: 82 are Asian, none are Black, 184 are white, 40 are Hispanic, and 35 identify as two or more races. In addition, we have 70 students on individualized education programs, three students on 504 plans, 53 students who are English language learners, and one student who is a former English language learner. So all together, we represent the FIN school.
For Woodward, we have 288 learners. That's an increase year over year, the past several years. We do have a bubble class in 3rd grade and 2nd grade, but then also a growing population in 3rd grade as well, that's leading to slightly larger class sizes, but certainly manageable because of the effectiveness of our educators. Currently, we have 14% of our students who receive special education services, that equates to 41 students. We have 23 students who have a 504 plan, which equates to 8%, and then we have 25 EL students and 20 former English language learning students.
And for NEARI, our current enrollment is 275 students. We have six classes at Grade 3 and eight classes at Grade 4. We currently have 32 students on IEPs, which is 11.6%, 23 students on 504 plans, which is at 8.4%, 10 English language learner students, and 27 former English language learner students. So we took a look at the past 10 years across our three schools, and we observed several key trends in our student population. Our demographics reveal a growing diversity within the Southborough community. As demonstrated in our previous school-specific slides, our data on multilingual learners shows substantial progress, with many students advancing through grade levels and moving from English language learners to former English learner status. This progress reflects the high-quality teaching practices, instructional materials, and resources consistently provided by our dedicated ELD teachers.
So our next slide speaks to our first two goals. First two goals support strategic objective number one: implement instructional practices that engage students in developing and demonstrating their knowledge and skills through rigorous, innovative, and relevant learning experience. Goal one is to identify and implement high-quality instructional resources, new curricula, and practices that engage all learners with a high degree of fidelity. Goal two, to develop, implement, and refine practices for engaging educators in collaborative learning communities, to examine data effectively, and to establish protocols that support them in utilizing data for continuous improvement of teaching and learning for all of our students. So if we could get to the next slide, I'll speak to some of the ways that we will be accomplishing our goal, looking at the photos from our school that support our work, cross-curricular connections between our ELA units, Wit and Wisdom, students who are studying Southwest, and Lloyd Keegan New inspired art projects taking place within our art classes. So that's a cross-curricular integration. SD Math, which is wonderful, it helps all of our students access math through an intuitive visual learning process. There's no language involved in that, which kids love, to see little Gigi, the penguin, traveling across different planes to accomplish goals. Our piloting of Eureka Square, which is a new math program, also by Great Minds, with a greater focus on the why of solving problems, not just the how to do it. So just thinking not in computation, but understanding how to solve a problem, why it's important to solve a problem, and the relevance of that connection of problems to real-life situations.
So goal three connects to the strategic objective of Equity of Opportunity, which provides all students access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences that meet their individual needs. Our third goal is to maintain and enhance inclusive classroom communities and school environments, characterized by equitable access to learning for every student, regardless of background or ability, and strive to address their diverse individual needs effectively. So some of the action steps are outlined in this slide, but really, I'd like to jump to the next slide, which illustrates a lot of these things happening at our school. So first, establishing a shared understanding of belongingness. We've worked to define what belongingness means in our community and why it's essential for both students and staff. This work is already underway with our open district-wide gathering, staff meetings, parent outreach, and ongoing professional development. As a district and individual school communities, we understand the importance of creating an environment where everyone feels seen, valued, and included. Belongingness enhances engagement and motivation and overall success within our school community. Integrating morning connections and meetings into daily schedules. We've set aside time each morning for meaningful check-ins to build relationships and set a positive tone for the day. This time is also used for our SCL curriculum, the second step. We use these moments to foster open communication, understand students' emotional states, and promote a sense of community, understanding, and acceptance. Regular morning connections help reinforce routines, build trust, and strengthen bonds within the classroom. Another action step for this goal is our professional development. As a staff, we will leverage what we've learned from professional development on trauma-informed education, restorative practices in fostering belonging in developmentally appropriate ways. Using trauma-informed strategies, we're able to support students who may face additional challenges, promoting a more inclusive and compassionate approach. Restorative practices help students feel heard and work to resolve conflicts in a constructive way, which supports our overall goal of belonging. And then finally, community forums and coffees. At each building, we use forums and informational gatherings where parents and staff can connect, share feedback, and discuss ways to strengthen our community. We'll use the connection opportunities to listen to community needs, celebrate success, and address any concerns in a collaborative environment. Principal coffees, curriculum nights, and community forums are part of our ongoing commitment to foster community where everyone feels they belong and has a voice.
And finally, goal four connects to the strategic objective of Healthy and Balanced Learners. Create and utilize structured and organized methods for integrating health and wellness consistently through, within, and across all educational settings. So some areas I'd like to highlight, some of our action steps under Family Connections. Each of our schools actively encourages family involvement through events like Open House, Open Black Night, family picnics, fun runs, and the Pinfall Festival. These gatherings are for valuable opportunities to bring families into our learning communities. Through this goal and its action steps, we're committed to strengthening relationships with caregivers and community partners, including Southborough Youth and Family Services, the Southborough Senior Center, and the RIT Department. Additionally, we will make it a priority to invite caregivers to share their cultural traditions, holidays, and expertise in their profession with students, enhancing belonging, inclusivity, and cultural awareness in our schools. Within Wellness Days and professional development, we will prioritize ongoing professional development to enhance instruction and promote student growth, both academically and socially and emotionally. Recent professional development topics have included UDL, Universal Design for Learning, Restorative Justice, and Teaching Talk topics focusing on the history of slavery in the United States, identity, and membership. These trainings and future ones will equip our educators with tools to address complex topics sensitively and effectively, fostering well-rounded educational awareness. Under our data analysis action step, our schools will continue to use the SAVERS, which stands for Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener, in conjunction with the CASA framework, which emphasizes self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. These screeners and surveys will utilize collective data on students' perception of three key dimensions of school climate: engagement, safety, and environment. Teachers and specialists will routinely work collaboratively to analyze this information to identify and support students facing social or emotional challenges, working together to ensure every student feels seen, heard, and valued. And finally, two more, safety table tops. We'll continue to conduct safety-focused discussions and training around response strategies for various scenarios, including active intruder events, natural disasters, and other emergencies. Using the ALALIS protocol, as well as statebook for safety strategies, we'll practice responsible drills with our students, crisis teams, and staff to ensure preparedness across different situations. And finally, our action step of mindful moments. All three schools have introduced Southborough resident Emma Bargalini into classrooms and staff meetings to teach mindful practices, yoga, and meditation. For our new action steps, we will begin to include these strategies as part of our belonging toolbox, supporting students and staff in developing restorative and calming techniques. We are dedicated to fostering an environment where mindfulness and restorative practices help to build and nurture and support a supportive school community. These action steps reflect our commitment to cultivating a positive, inclusive, and well-rounded environment across all of our schools, preparing students for academic success, and fostering belonging. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for us?
I do.
Go ahead.
So you don't need to go back to these slides. I'm just going to refer to who we are slides.
Sure.
And I can see where, I know this is a, these are, at this point in time, the different schools, but you can sort of imagine that you're tracking movement in a couple of things, like English learners to former English learners, and that seems to track, you know, positively.
and that seems to track positivity, if you will. But I want to have a question about special ads. So certainly in FINN, we have a significant number of students on IEPs, not many on 504s at that point. And then as you sort of work, we work our way through from FINN to Woodward to NAREE to some degree, although I think that there's one, there's something that's a little missing. You see where the number of students on IEPs is dropping and where the students on 504s is increasing, which suggests to me, again, this is one point in time, different classes, but suggests to me that students in IEPs will likely, many will sort of move to 504s, okay, as they get into later grades. Even though the percentage changes, it's actually the exact same number in NAREE as it is in Woodward as far as 504s. So it's not putting on, but it, so I guess I don't recall thinking about this before, but is that basically what happens?
Yeah, I can speak to the FINN number because it is, if you look at it from a percentage standpoint, it is significant.
It's good size.
Keep in mind that FINN preschool supports kids from Southborough. And we do a lot of walk-in services, so our, maybe a student who is on, we're obligated to support them through special education services, but they may not be part of the building. It could be speech and language, could be, so there's a lot of the initial developmental issues that then get, that developmentally start to decrease over time.
Get sorted out.
Exactly. And then, well, the term developmental delay is often used to encapsulate some of the issues that are not clearly defined because of the developmental variation with our students, but yet they're behind in a particular domain. And those domains could be OT, could be PT, could be speech-language, could be behavior. And then as the developmental gap starts to lessen, you see less of the developmental delay. I think it's still grade three that they can use. Nine, yeah. And then the numbers start to decrease.
I can add too, that we do have special education trend reports that we look at over time. So looking at trends over time with students who are eligible for special education, how that compares to our historical averages, state averages in terms of students who receive special education services. So in addition to what Clayton described, we have a lot of data around trend lines and reports that we can also pull back from.
So would you say, and even though I've said this a couple of times to be careful, these are snapshots of the different grades at one point in time. Would you say that the trend kind of almost follows?
Yeah, I would say the trend is, is we are below the state average in terms of identifying students. And that if you look at students who experienced their continuum of education pre-K through eight, as they move through that experience, if they received special education services early on, by the time they typically reach the middle school or enter the high school, many students no longer require that level of support.
If I could just clarify one thing, Roger. So when we talk about EL students and FLESC students, yes, that they are moving through and gaining skills to, you know, and developing their language where they become a former language learner. The same is not true necessarily for 504s and IEPs. Those are very different things. A 504 is really an accommodation plan, so it's anything from students with a medical diagnosis to, you know, allergies, to any kind of like accommodation that needs to be put in place for them to access the curriculum. It's not a modified curriculum, which is more of an IEP.
Makes sense, okay. Thank you very much.
I'm curious if, if for the principals or for the administrative team, who is responsible for entering like this latest data into the DESI website, not website, but their, you know, data capturing system? Is it one individual for the whole district? Or is it like each principal? But just so that the most accurate information is in both, is in one place.
So we, I mean, we have a data specialist. We have Julie Marshall and Judy Davies. Judy Davies is responsible for all state reporting, so that gets submitted on a quarterly basis, I believe. And she's responsible for validating the data, making sure that data has integrity and meeting the deadlines of the state requirements. And Stephanie can speak to some of the data, other data sets.
So Judy will work closely with the schools if there are errors where she, when she's working on that state reporting. And all of that is kept in our student information system. And Power School is sort of the mechanism or the platform that she's using. And then Power School is what we use, so the same data set to feed into Analytic View. So what the principals are sharing with you is from Analytic View, which is our data dashboard or data platform that we're all using. And that syncs nightly with Power School. And then we have a few other data sources that feed into Analytic View. But in terms of demographic data, it's coming from Power School. And things like racial demographics, racial and ethnic are self-identified when people register. So that is determined by the families when they register, and that's what feeds into Power School through enrollment forms. And our enrollment process is through Power School. So it's all running through our student information system.
The comparative data on slide eight, those were taken from DESI, but those are the only two, otherwise, yes. As Dr. Einhardt mentioned, they're from Analytic View.
The reason I bring it up is having attended the Massachusetts School Committees Conference recently, it's very reassuring to know that, one, we're updating, we're monitoring that quarterly. Many of our peers, and we saw some examples, are quite out of date. And what happens is that if you, this is where the government, this is where grants, this is where decisions is made based on not what we hold in our Excel sheets and PowerPoint, it's what's entered into DESI. So I was really, this is great. And I remember when we were talking about getting this data tool to see that these three slides are the output of that is great. And that's, if anyone else has any.
Can I add one additional thing? So Stephanie was talking about Analytic View. I think it's important to mention that this year, teachers had training on it as well. So we're all able, specialists, classroom teachers, we're all able to access that information. So when we're in data meetings, or we're looking at specific students, we're all looking at the same data. So I think that's the same platform and data source. I think it's really important to share that. And it's a powerful tool for us.
What's the feedback been from staff and faculty on using the tool?
Really positive.
It's a work in progress. Like we selected Analytic View after, and it was a multi-year process to get to this point of rolling out to teachers. We selected it because of the degree of customizability, which also means it's a lot of work. And we continue to work toward it serving the kind of analytic needs that we have, so, and to work through the kinks. So we are constantly checking it, and people are constantly alerting us if something doesn't look quite right in the data. Teachers are entering data for local assessments through that. So it is definitely a work in progress. Teachers have been giving us good feedback. They will tell us when, you know, this is so great to see. I wish I could see this. And then we are sort of saying, okay, let's see where we can go next. So we got a lot of good dialogue, I would say, with teachers and we continue to work through some kinks.
I think like anything, the more, the more they use it, the more comfortable they are. And the more comfortable they are, the faster they go back to it and use it for the next thing, and they're learning along the way. I had a teacher just the other day, we were talking about attendance concern, and she pulled it up and was able to see, you know, in real time, what the student's attendance data looked like, where in years past, they might be relying on me to pull a Power School report through my admin, which, you know, could take time. And they were able to have this ready to go for a parent conversation, you know, in twenty minutes.
So I had the privilege of attending a meeting with Steve and a group of teachers. They were talking about students and how to support students. And during that conversation and thinking about the profile of the student they were using in Analytic View to look at real-time data. So I think it is a powerful tool. It's the first time that we have all of our disparate data in one place for teachers. And now it's just making sure that teachers know how to use the tool, and most importantly, how to use the tool and really think about how does the data inform what's next for kids.
I know as we introduce like all these new enhancements, you know, sometimes you might get the why, and one more thing, and one more thing. But I really, I'm starting, over the years, I've gained an understanding that the data helps you to make decisions that are more equitable, right? And if you want to focus on equity, but you can't do it just from like, well, I think, or, you know, what I, what I see happening, the data can actually show you that. And over time, you know, we're just getting started with this, these tools, et cetera. But imagine five years, three years from now, you're able to look back and say, oh, when we introduced this curriculum, we saw this change, as well as you can overlay so much of this together and really be able to make decisions. And not just on a, you know, well, how is it impacting this, this demographic of student that, you know, based on their identity, but it's like based on who learns, who 504s, IEPs? What their, you know, when did they start? Did they enter in as a, I mean, English as a Second Language, et cetera, et cetera? So I think just always kind of reinforce to the staff, I know it's one more thing, but it's good. You know, it's gonna impact the decisions that we can make for the students in the long run.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. I know this is a big team. That includes you and others who put all this together. I think it's a lot of work. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Legislative, legislative update?
So just a quick update on valid question two, which remove the graduation requirement of MCAS. So I just want to clarify for the community and for the community that MCAS still remains for students in grades three through ten. Our schools will continue to receive accountability ratings based on that data. And what has changed is at the high school level, that MCAS was the competency determination for graduation. Now that is no longer a requirement. However, there is still a local competency determination at the high school that's required, and that is the course of studies and the number of credits in certain subjects there. So that is the significant shift. But MCAS will remain, accountability will still be something that we'll need to look at very closely. And parents will still be getting MCAS data about student performance based on that one particular assessment.
What percentage of students didn't graduate because of MCAS?
So across the state, it's seven hundred students. And our district, over the course of a five-year period, if you look at the trends, zero students did not meet that graduation requirement.
Okay. So not a material change, most likely?
For our particular district, not a significant impact. It was more of a kind of a floor rather than a ceiling in terms of graduating requirements.
Can I add to that?
Go ahead.
Also on that legislative update, so each district school committee has a delegate or two, like a delegate and alternate that during the school committee conference, they're able to put together or agree on, vote on what it is they want to present, have the president present to the legislature, the state government. And one of them, I think it was ten that we reviewed, and the second one was around this particular item. And we just, in context, without giving you all the words, said, yes, we agree that the voters voted, and this is the direction we're going in. And the, I think it was the overwhelming, you know, amount of delegates from the school committees decided, voted with the language that, yes, we agree with the vote, and we would like to have Massachusetts, like at a state level, agree to develop an improved or different or enhanced competency measure going forward. So that was something that was voted on last week from Massachusetts School Committee delegates.
Is it more specific about like improved or like in what way?
It didn't, no.
It's open-ended?
It was open-ended.
Update on action plan?
Sure. So in your packet, I did include an update on the action plan. The last update I provided was September eleventh. So this update is as of today. I'm pleased to share that we continue to take the eight goals very seriously and move the goals to fruition. I would say that the first goal, really last report, we focused on training the leadership team on investigation procedures. At this time, we're really working on documenting investigation procedures and practices and having manuals and guides for our leadership team to use. And also in December, we'll be conducting an audit of investigation documentation. We'll be working closely with legal counsel to actually review investigations that were conducted in the months of September, October, November, and get feedback on what could be improved, what can we do differently? So that is an update on that. We're also looking at developing the manuals with the counsel.
Sorry, Greg, is legal counsel going to be the one doing the audit?
Yes. So internal and also working with legal counsel to look at some random investigations that we've done.
Okay.
The other area that we focused on is increasing the capacity of leadership to bring in coherence to the work of Equity. So we did welcome our Director of Equity, Longing Community Engagement. I'm pleased to share that during her brief tenure, she's had an opportunity to meet with all principals. She visited all ten schools across the district and is in the process of a meeting with faculty and staff and really thinking about what is, what is the next level of work that she can help students forward with? And she's already made a big pact, she's meeting teachers and staff, and really hopeful. I'm also pleased to share that on November first, our first Wellness Day educators participated in professional learning on belonging. So across our seven elementary schools, we had seven presenters focused on belonging and really thinking about deepening our understanding of the language of belonging, but also looking at fully look at understanding better microaggressions and really focusing on some detailed work. And the feedback was very positive on that day. And again, one of the goals was to have training across all of our schools with baseline knowledge of all educators, faculty, and staff. Also, principals held a number of coffees, which were well-attended. And again, increasing the opportunities for conversation and dialogue. That was very successful. I continued hosting monthly superintendent advisory meetings to provide updates and also listen to parents' concerns, ideas, and suggestions. The LPAKnet in the month of October. I had the pleasure of attending that event and engaging with families. So we did a wonderful job of meeting that parent advisory. I held our first superintendent office hour. We had five parents attend, and it was nice to listen to parents and hear their concerns, ideas, and suggestions. And it was nice to listen to parents and hear their concerns, ideas, and suggestions. And this also want to acknowledge this school committee hosting three office hour sessions for the community. The next goal centered on collecting data around disciplinary situations that happen in our school to really think about patterns and trends that are happening across our schools. So we're in the process of logging disciplinary infections in Power School. So the month of October, November, we were first to have principals across the ten schools log events. In December, we'll be looking at what types of events have been logged and calibrating, what should go into Power School and what should not. And we're also looking at patterns and trends in terms of the data that we're collecting. So we are, we are already seeing patterns and trends, not surprising where students have the most conflict. Typically is recess, bus, cafeteria. And really thinking about, okay, what tools and skills do we need to provide our students to kind of manage that interpersonal conflict that can take place? We're also trying to expand the pathways that caregivers can report their concerns. So one of the vehicles is using Sandy Hook, Say Something Anonymous reporting tool. So all of our leadership team has been trained in that tool, Sandy Hook, we authorized the training. So we participated in that new training. Mary Ellen Duggan is working with our contacts at Sandy Hook. And the next level of work is really working with our elementary principals to think about what the, what the training of students will look like and what the curriculum will look like. One of the areas we were not anticipating is that we do need parents' permission because of internet privacy for students to be able to access. This is something we're navigating, we're hoping to roll out the training in early December and then also kind of working with families on how to use that tool. In addition, you know, the next goal is really to kind of deepen understanding, deepen all steps and members' understanding of the districts work around equity and opportunity empowering learners. So we continue the professional development, professional learning plan. Again, I mentioned that the life really decision focus on the elementary faculty and staff. The next Wellness Day will focus on professional learning at middle school. And also on the November fifth, District Professional Development Day, there will be a number of professional learning opportunities for educators to engage in this work. The other work that we've continued is to look at our policies. So the joint policy subcommittee met on October twenty first and articulated the plan to focus on three policies, the civil rights non-discrimination policy, Title IX sexual harassment policy, and the bullying prevention intervention policy. So those, that subcommittee will be working on those policies and incorporating the feedback from CIC into, into the policies. The goal is to have draft policies to bring to the combined school committee on December fourth. Have a first reading and then have a second reading at the, the March meeting for this work to approve those policies. And then lastly, the school committee held a special open meeting, school committee meeting on October seventeen to present the results of the, from the comprehensive investigating consulting LLC audit. So right now, we are incorporating the feedback of that audit into our work and making sure that those recommendations are, are in fact incorporated and accomplished. And that is an update.
I think you missed the district equity audit.
Oh, yes. So we are also working with Mass Insight. Thank you. So we are working with Mass Insight. We have scheduled meeting in the next couple of weeks to plan out what that's going to look like. We have engagement contract. We've had initial conversations and have a good plan for to survey families, survey faculty and staff and students and really think about where are we in terms of the original equity audit and the goals identified and what progress we've made and what remains to be accomplished.
Thank you. Comments or questions on the action plan?
Greg, is there a place in the action plan where we have a measurement tool? We've talked about this in the past, having a measurement tool to basically, how do we know that teacher faculty is retaining what has been taught in the PD or in, you know, whatever virtual learning is done? Was, is that here or is that just a general development area?
No, I think that is, that is one of the findings of CIC was that there was one thing to engage in professional learning, but another to have kind of a command of the content, the knowledge of the content. It is something we're looking at in terms of having exit tickets at the end of professional learning sessions to really see what the learning is. So we are, we are exploring ways to really monitor and understand what, what the learning is of all faculty and staff across the district.
And one step that we have taken relative to that is having some really explicit goals for the learning faculty and staff around PD and belonging. You know, in terms of understanding the concept of belonging, understanding specific threats to belonging such as stereotype threat, stereotype microaggression, like there's, yeah, like a list of, and then understanding wise interventions and what that means. So, you know, we're trying to develop and articulate as we would with young learners, with our adult learners, these are our goals for learning. And then, as Greg said, still working on then how do we measure sort of progress toward those goals?
You know, as you research, there's just so many free and clever ways to do that that are not so cumbersome. I'm not advertising at all, but you know, the tool like, if there's an opportunity where you have like a team-wide meeting and you use PoliBee and everyone is logged in either phone or their laptops, you just ask a question, what would you do in this scenario? And as a leadership team, you get to see, wow, seventy percent of my team, you know, answered this way and thirty percent answered this way. How do we get closer to that, a hundred percent are answering in the, you know, correct way? And no one has to go home, take hours and hours of tests and read, you know, watch videos. It's just kind of like, and each other as peers are seeing the results on the screen at the same time. Whoa, seventy, thirty percent of my colleagues don't know what to do here. Okay, I need to talk to somebody. I just, you know, so I just wanted to mention that. And I had a question about the policies. Can the principals provide the policy subcommittee input on maybe scenarios or feedback they've been hearing, seeing, feeling from either in their roles or like from the different Ts that you've been having? Because the policy subcommittee is made up of school committee members, administrative team. We're not in your shoes to say, you know, man, I mean, I know what to do because I've been doing this for twenty something years, but you know, there's not something written. I suggest you guys write something. I would love to like tap them for some of that.
Yeah, and that is the intention of the documentation. So we have our policies and oftentimes it's, it's following law to make sure we have the steps and procedures. And it's the, and it's saying, okay, here are the steps we have to take as building leaders or district leaders to follow the policy. And that is the manuals that we're creating. To take the policy and interpret it into what it looks like. And that is where we're going to be seeking feedback from principals. Like, is this clear? Is this checklist helping? Is there something missing that we think we should be talking about?
So just an overall question about how you will get to, I guess I'm gonna say completed goals. We have a column that has action steps. And then we've got a status column, you know, with at least possibility of having a status of future work or in process or completed. Currently, and I don't necessarily expect to see anything other than this, everything's in process. At least that's, one good thing is, is there's not future work, it's in process. However, if I take a look at, and it's twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Take a look at potentially how to, how to get from in process to completed, at least in some situations. Create a committee is something, I guess, that I see, well, I could ultimately get to completed. Implement school-wide wellness initiatives, that's something that I guess could get to completed. Continued partnerships, I don't, this isn't necessarily a bad thing. I don't know that that ever moves out of in process, right? Some of these things, I'm guessing when we get to June, or if that's the date that we're gonna use to sort of ultimately see how, what occurred this year. You know, have you, have you thought about kind of what this is gonna look like at the end of this school year, for example? Still allotted in process, which isn't necessarily bad, or some number we'll definitely have completed.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in terms of where we are in terms of the school year, it's, it's November thirteenth. So two and a half months. And one of the goals of this document was also to talk about evaluation metrics. What are the metrics to say, okay, did we, did we accomplish these goals? I, I will share that some of these goals are, there's levels, like you reach a level. There's still more work to be done. It's not a checkbox. It's not like, okay, we're done. This is no longer something that we need to work toward. But I will give some thought around, here are the evaluation metrics for the goals that we've identified. And what do we think the next level of work is? Like beyond, beyond what is articulated within this plan? That is some of the work that we'll be doing with Mass Insight and really evaluating equity audit and thinking about what is, what are the next steps we need to take?
I mean, that makes sense. I mean, truthfully, as a number of these things, if, if they, if they show as completed, I'd be disappointed because it's like, some of these things are really things that are important to continue, right? As opposed to things that have a finite, all right, we're done with that, we can move on. Okay, I mean, it's definitely, it's a, it's a lot of work to try to determine the levels you just described, the, the levels within some of these in-process actions.
Roger, would it be maybe something to propose is that, you know, if you saw this in June, and it still said in progress, but there was like a health column that said strong? Like it's, it's where we are now is low, medium, strong, like how well are we doing?
Well, I'm guessing it might be, is that kind of what, what you meant when you talked about levels? Okay, we're moving from a, we moved from a lower level to, I guess it's a low to high, yeah. So at least from a beginning level to a more mature level?
I think there are a couple of layers of accountability that comes too. So this is one. This is one action plan to respond to what we experienced in the spring. And we also have our district strategic plan and our action plan. That's another layer of accountability that we're working toward that encompasses a lot of other actions that we're taking to meet the goals identified in the strategic plan. And then we also have our goals that were identified in the equity audit. So there are a lot of layers of accountability that we're taking. So part of the work that we'll do is look at each of these and make sure that there is alignment and try to have some type of common reporting tool so we can look at each and see the threat that exists between the two.
Thank you.
You want to add something? I have one in the subcommittee part. So part of the CIC recommendation was reviewing these policies and potentially creating new if we find that whatever we, and I'm looking at you too because you're in the policy subcommittee. If, so did you talk about utilizing what we have as a shell and modifying it? Or how did, where are we at with these policies, if you can speak to that?
Well, no, we did not like concretely say we would start from the base. But we'd set up some time amongst each other to say, these individuals are gonna focus on policy X, Y, and Z to come back to the subcommittee as a whole with, here's our proposal. I think the, so each of the sub-teams might be taking a different approach.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of where we are right now.
And I can talk about strategy too. So, so our joint policy subcommittee, we identified the policies that we're gonna work on. Some of the work that we identified was as a result of the CIC recommendation. So the policy subcommittee was given the recommendations. So we divided into smaller working groups. And each working group is assigned a liaison. So for example, the folks working on these particular three policies are working closely with Heather and legal counsel and the CIC recommendations. And their job is to take that and come up with a draft.
Okay.
Which includes all of those aspects of CIC's recommendations.
Okay. And maybe I should know this. But is there any external review that we go through for policy development when we're at a point of second draft and we want some expertise?
So all policy is reviewed by legal counsel. So typically what we'll do is even before we start, if it's a new policy, that's a different story. But if it's an existing policy, we send it to legal counsel and say, you know, what has changed? What are you recommending? What should be different? So we start at that point. The policy subcommittee then creates a draft that goes back, that goes back to legal counsel. We go to the first reading. And then typically that first reading will result in some recommended changes. That goes back to the policy subcommittee, changes are made, and then it's finalized by legal counsel towards.
Okay.
So there's a lot of.
Got it.
That's from a review.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Anything else on the action plan? Go ahead.
Stephen, you talked about the training for how to use the reporting tool, or maybe a transcript? Training, training for the students, and then we learned that we have to do kind of like a privacy sort of parental sign-on for that. As you figure that out and you start to say, well, how can I actually help these students? I would say leverage our teams at the high school because they could probably come up with a very quick, digestible, usable input for you, even a video that would help to teach your youngest students, you know, from elementary school, how to use this. And not solely design something for just like, you know, us adults, how to use it. So, and also maybe hearing from a teen that this is a great tool to use if you're having, you know, like just to encourage them to remove that fear level that the anonymity is there. Again, hearing it from Greg versus hearing it from senior in high school is a different voice, so. Because I want them to feel empowered to use it and I want families to use it. We can tell the adults all day, but you know, to hear from the kids is really important because the last several years has informed me that it's the students that are coming forward with things that we really need to, you know, within situations where they're being upstandard. So just a bad recommendation, please.
That's helpful.
Is there anything else that we need the principals to stay for? Okay, you're more than welcome to stay, but I think we've gotten to a point where there's nothing you necessarily need to hear, although we want you to hear all of it. Feel free to enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School calendars.
So we did provide the school committee with a memo of the progress, the calendar advisory working group has made over the past many months. The working group has been in existence for, I think it's three years, so it's had a lot of input and feedback and learning around calendars over its tenure. We began last winter really thinking about what the FY '25, '25, '26 calendar would look like, and what I provided in the memo are four calendars that we brought forward to the combined, especially combined open meeting on December 4th. And what the calendar and working group organized was advantages and disadvantages in each of the calendars, just to make sure that it's clear the thinking behind each of the calendars. The first calendar really has a number of six religious holidays, so Diwali, Eid, the Friday, Lunar New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur. So those are observed as non-school days. The second calendar has, religious holidays are marked as half-days rather than full days, so again, the six religious holidays, Diwali, Eid, the Friday, Lunar New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur, so again, they're observed as half-days. Calendar three is kind of a mirror of the current school calendar, it's a typical school calendar, as Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur are no school days, while Diwali, Eid, the Friday, and Lunar New Year are half-days. And then the fourth calendar, schools in session on Diwali, Eid, the Friday, Lunar New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur, so no days off for those observances. We also tried to look forward to looking at '26, '27, and '27, '28, to see what the calendar would look like. And also, I did share with the committee an update, and part of the update had a link to this document, and what is new in that linked document is it does analyze each of the calendars to look at the number of five-day weeks, number of four-day weeks, so that data is provided for each of the four calendars. The goal is to, again, have a discussion around the four calendars at the December combined meeting, and begin not to vote, but to then have a vote at the March meeting around the calendar for next year.
Any reaction to?
I'll just point our attention to the, this last slide, page six, where it has the schools and the comparative of our neighbor schools. You can digest it however you will, but it goes back to what I was saying earlier about data, the data evidence supporting like how we make our decisions. A familiar saying that you might hear as we look at calendars, and days off, and half-days, et cetera, is its impact towards student success, and teacher success, and grades, et cetera. And I think this helps to provide you some evidence of how it has not been shown that these days off from school, or any adjustment to those is impacting the resulting measures that we have, right? So the next argument will say that, well, that's through MCAS, and we don't really, but it's a tool that we have today. So just another measurement to help in informing our decisions and conversation around this. And I thought it was also really helpful for us to have multiple years played out, because that shows you, okay, well, this might be the impact year one, but now look at it in for a three-year span, and you could see that, wow, for three years, you may or may not be losing or, you know, days of teaching time. So I won't go into all the details, because you have to, you can read it, but I just want to like really point that to fill its attention. It was really helpful in the subcommittee discussions.
For this last slide, do we, do we know what the calendars for these comparator schools are?
Yes, so the question that was asked was, do schools who have a calendar, somewhat calendar one that's proposed, or have, how is their achievement compared to our calendar? So we chose districts that have calendar one, and compared their achievements to ours, to our district.
Do we have any data on how this, how any of the calendars could play into recruitment?
No, but I think.
Theories.
Theories?
Yeah.
Theories, I thought she said there is.
You're like used to me.
All of your recruitment here.
No, sorry. Oh, sure.
Okay, okay.
So what we do know is that, you know, we try to, through collective borrowing agreements, try to make sure that people feel like they have a pathway to observe what's important to them in terms of religious observances. We also have heard from people, from new hires, they ask us to see the calendar, and they also ask what observances are included in the school calendar. So I think it's also a signal for people when they look at our district and positions, they're going to our calendar, and the calendar is reflecting value around what's important or not important. So that is something that we heard entirely, you know, how many data sets to say that, you know, districts who have a calendar that's more inclusive of religious observances in our recruiting of our reverse, oh, we do have theories.
So the plan is that we present this on the combined meeting in December 4th, and I don't know if you said that already, did you? Okay, sorry.
It's always worth repeating.
We'll talk about it again, but we're not going to vote on the four.
All right. MSBA accelerated repair program for the trotier roof replacement.
Yes, so on October 30th, the MSBA Board of Directors did give us the honor of choosing the T-Bren Trotter Middle School Roof Replacement Project as one of the projects selected for the accelerated repair program. This is exciting to be included in this repair program, and it's identical to the one that the Finn boiler was replaced in 2020, so we do have some, we have pretty good experience with it. And so what we're engaging with now is just conversations on how to make it all happen. Schematic design is going to be an important part of that process, and making sure that we are, you know, following everything that MSBA lays out in the next months ahead, and there's timelines that we have to follow. But like I said, we're accustomed to it, we're used to it, and we're going to be partnering with the town to see what steps are necessary next.
Questions?
This is such good news.
So it is.
Okay. Just wanted to say that.
But, so, just to give a little bit more context around this. So the start date for the 90 days that you have to respond is January 1st or 2nd.
Correct.
Which then leads us to April 2nd.
Correct.
Which our town meeting is April 7th.
Oh.
Maybe not the end of the world, because do we know how much we would be going for for schematic design?
We can see in a maximum, I think, of 15,000, so it's not a huge amount.
Okay. So maybe, okay.
So it's 15,000 unless the project exceeds 5 million, and then we have to negotiate. But in our kind of investigation, it's not a drastic increase.
Okay, because you have 5.8 in the capital plan.
Correct. So we're anticipating, you know, $25,000 max, if it has to go above the budget.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it's not insurmountable.
Okay. So that's one point. The second point is just, I think it's great for trotier, but it's just not great timing, because we're also going for a new building. However, and I'm looking at Keith, this is one that's been on the capital plan for a long time, and do we know what the MSBA contribution or percentage is on a roof?
So I think the last project, and again, you have to look at this, the data carefully, I think it was 29%.
Right.
Can that range on the reimbursable eligible expenses?
So the whole roof's not reimbursable?
So there are certain things that are not similar to a building project.
Okay.
Muches. I'll just add to, one of the, one of the advantages of moving forward with the project is trotier is solar ready.
Right.
So there's also an offset of savings of energy costs to the.
Right. And obviously will be bonded, because it's a significant investment. So it's just not, it's great, it's just not great timing. But that doesn't, you know, it needs to, it needs to be done, and it's been pushed.
It has, that's.
So we need to stop pushing things out and doing things when they need to be done. At least that's fine. So we don't know whether we need to put this on town meeting yet, I guess is.
Correct, and I think we do have the deadline to submit to learn our goals to the town. I believe it's 2nd in December, I think December 12th.
Okay.
So we have a few weeks to get working on this.
And maybe we just put a placeholder, just in case. Okay.
You said it was December 12th?
Yes, I believe.
When's our school committee meeting, 11?
Yes.
Usually, I don't know how, usually they give us a little bit of flexibility.
Well, because this is before.
Yeah.
December morning is the date.
What is it?
December morning.
We'll ask for a.
An extension.
Okay. And then, so this is for, we have the schedule for schematic design, and then you have how long after you vote schematic design, or is it from the January 25th, January 1st, 2025 date that you have to get funding for building?
No, there is, you have another window of time to get funding for the project.
Okay.
And then a window of time to actually complete the project. And I don't have the windows, but it's substantial. It's not, it's not like you have to have it wrapped up.
It's actually 12 months from, to get the funding to secure the.
From what date?
Appropriateness is within 12 months of invitation, sorry.
So, so then we're looking at needing to go to town meeting in the fall, is that right? If, is that the January 1st, 2025 date, or is that the October date?
The January 2nd, 2025.
So we wouldn't even be able to hit.
So I just, I think we should, we need to do more.
Okay.
Investigation. I think similar to learn like the first phase.
Yeah.
And we get approved to the next phase. Like there's, there's different phases as well.
There are like three different phases. There's 90 days for the initial schematic, and then there's 120 days to submit like the certified vote, and then it's, it looks like 12 months to secure the.
So that's what we need to figure out when that's 12 months.
Got it. Makes sense. Did you have something else, Roger?
Did we just talk about this, and I didn't hear it, and there was a, we've got 90 days from the commencement date, which is January 2nd, so that's April 2nd?
Yeah.
February, April 2nd.
Yeah. For schematic design, which is the 15,000.
Right, so that's, that's the one that we're not too, you know, that's, that's not insurmountable.
Right.
I think that would be really.
Okay. Approval of grants and donations. So A is approval of donation of feminine products to the Southbury Public Schools from pre-period with the approximate value of 1,550, I assume that's right. Approval of donation of a Vic Firth snare drum, approximately $80, and a Ludwig snare drum hard case, approximately $40, to the Neri School Program from the Theodos family. Approval of donation to Southbury Extended Day Program from an anonymous sun life assurance company of Canada employee in the amount of $85. Approval of anonymous donation to Trotier Middle School to provide a full scholarship for a Trotier student to attend the Washington DC trip in the amount of $1,411. And approval of donation to Trotier Middle School from Southbury Youth Basketball Association to provide uniforms for the boys and girls basketball teams at Trotier Middle School in the amount of $3,640. Do I say anything about any of that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. I'm going to ask that we break this motion up into two motions, because I'm abstaining from E, because I'm on the Southbury Youth Basketball Board. So is there a motion to approve 7A through D?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, that's 5-0, thank you. And then, is there a motion for E?
So moved.
On second.
All in favor? All opposed?
One abstention.
So 4-0-1, thank you. And thank you to everyone who donated all of those values. All but Neri Building Committee.
So the Neri Building Committee met with MSBA Board of Directors October 30th, and I'm pleased to report that MSBA is moving the district into schematic design, so really getting for the design model. The district's working with Arrow Street Architects and Skanska, the owner's project manager, we're working on design, so there is a design committee, we're working through different iterations, and they're thinking about the layout, making sure that adjacencies work, so that is work, that work is happening. We are planning on communicating this information to the faculties, so we have scheduled meetings to meet with the faculties in the next couple of weeks. And we're also, the Neri Building Committee is also working on kind of communicating good information to the citizens, so that they can stay updated with where we are with the project. I'm not sure, Roger, you want to add anything?
Just briefly, so I just want to emphasize that the, there is a lot of focus on communicating information about the project to citizens, as well as trying to find more ways to communicate to citizens about the project. We're doing some tours of Neri, and I think there's a, I think that's a, that's a kind of a double benefit. One, anybody that can go actually observe Neri will understand why it needs to be replaced, and also because hopefully there's a, there's a combination of citizens as well as building committee members, you know, questions can be asked and answered during that tour. I'd just like to make a comment about the website. It has been a bit of a work in process, it's www.neribuilding.com. It really has come along, and I encourage everyone who's watching this or who watches this, to take a few minutes, go on the website, it's, you know, you don't really have to go anyplace else, you can, you can actually look up the history of the meetings, you can get the frequently asked questions, so it really, it really has come along. We had some growing pains at the beginning, but it's a, it's a good source of information, and doesn't, doesn't take long to get on it and actually investigate things. I think, I think that's it for me. I won't drag on like I did the last meeting.
Anybody have any questions about? Anybody have any questions about the building or?
So I'll just advertise the next Neri Building Tours this Saturday. There are two opportunities, ten o'clock and eleven o'clock.
Correct.
So if people are interested in the community to actually see a Neri, those are opportunities this Saturday morning at Neri School. So, and Keith, Keith will be the tour guide for that event, for those tours.
What time did you say?
Ten o'clock and eleven o'clock.
Okay, for the community, got it.
Nine o'clock for boards and committees in Southborough.
So come on down.
We just had a good suggestion, Keith mentioned that one parent said, you should first tour Woodward.
Yeah.
And then go to Neri. So you're just having this.
Interesting.
Very compressed.
All right. Twenty-four, twenty-five subcommittee and liaison assignments. So the updated one is in your packet. Just wanted to put it in here in case there were any requests for changes or if we're good with this. In case somebody doesn't have enough work to do and wants to add another one.
What'd you say, Laura?
All right.
This is good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Keith. He nicely put an update of where we're at in the packet. So for anybody following along online, it is available. So Keith, do you want to give a brief overview?
Yeah, so as the principal mentioned earlier, the adjustments that we made have, have been working well. At the anchor behind it all is we have full-time drivers and fifteen of them that are consistently coming in for both their AM and PM trips. And instantaneously, once that started happening, probably about two, three weeks ago, things stabilized nicely. Then we were really able to dive in and make some tweaks and adjustments. And the principals have commented on that. I have worked directly with some families and some drivers to get things dialed in, but they are one-offs. They are, they are not a large number of items that need to be reviewed or fixed. And as the principal said, all buses are arriving on time to school. The lengths of the routes have equalized as best they can. And we're in pretty, pretty good shape going into the winter months. So as long as the driver stability remains the same and we're getting good quality communication from dispatch about when we do have hiccups, we are going to have smooth sailing and we won't have to have a transportation update.
That's the goal.
That is the goal.
Does anybody have a question about current state?
Did you have a question about future state?
Okay. So do you want to talk about the R?
The R P M?
No.
Oh.
So current issue.
Okay, current, current.
Sorry.
Could you, is it appropriate if you put a feeler out to the community that says, if you are thinking about coming back into the bus transportation as we approach the winter months, please reach out to you or someone first, you know, so that we can ensure that.
Help facilitate, make sure stops are.
Right, right, right.
That's what I would recommend. I would recommend using the transportation request form. I can talk to Greg about how best to communicate that. We still are actively checking that daily routinely. So that is a good method to ask any type of question. And we have had that, like, you know, we have had parents that have made the decision, hey, listen, for the first month or so, getting things ironed now, we're not quite sure what our schedule was going to be. Now we'd like to use a bus. So we get, you know, maybe two or three of those over the course of a week in October. But by this point, things, people's routines have stabilized. Yeah, I can talk to Greg about how we can get that out.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I, that's my concern is that as, you know, news is shared that things are starting to be more stable and someone says, you know what, I'll come back to you.
Give it a look, sure.
But we're like, oh, we don't stop there anymore.
And that's true, yeah. I mean, if a stop has not been utilized to date, it is likely removed.
Yeah.
However, the, there is an intuition by the drivers and some families have stopped out. Hey, listen, I'm not going to use it, but I'm going to start. And they'll actually engage with the driver. Those aren't things I necessarily know, but they've at least established that. And I do know about a half dozen of those that have occurred.
And do you know when NRT will have more data on ridership?
They have been pretty decent about providing that. We have basically submissions from all the drivers now. We're balancing against our kind of data that we collected to make sure that we, you know, have solid numbers. But, you know, we have a pretty good feel of what we have for ridership.
I'm just curious, based on what Mr. Bucci said related to Woodward, because I actually was there this morning and it's, it's definitely worse than what I'd seen last year. So I'm just curious if Woodward, now that's a bubble class too, right? So we know we have more kids. But I'm just wondering if our ridership is lower at Woodward or? Because Finn doesn't seem to have that at all.
It's tough, the problem, the only problem is that we have nothing compared to because it's the first year we've done this configuration.
Okay.
So I can't just say, yeah, last year that bus was. What we can do is kind of aggregate it together with what we're seeing with, with Finn in totality. But it's hard to say, yes, bus seven last year had twenty kids, now they have thirty. That, we, we're not able to do it because we're not comparing apples to apples.
But it would be a good idea to start collecting parent pickup data, like how many cars.
Yeah.
So we, we can start having a baseline and comparing it year to year.
That, that's true.
I mean, you probably know last year parent pickup numbers.
We do, that, that's a good point, yes, we do.
Right. I mean, the morning, I haven't done Woodward pickup too much, but the morning seems really bad.
Busy.
Yeah. And you have cars cutting around people that are letting people out, like it's not good.
Use the bus?
So people, well, I would have if we didn't miss it.
Steve mentioned that.
I like a fifty percent of the bus.
Steve, Steve mentioned that, you know, the.
But I'm talking about on the street. People, people are letting people out and cars are going around. It's, it's just people not being nice, but.
Oh, interesting. What is a bubble class?
Oh, sorry, so they have a hundred and fifty, fifty-three kids in second grade. All the other classes are like one thirty, one ten. Like a bubble is just a larger.
If you look at most grades are six sections or seven sections. A bubble class, consider it an eighth section.
Okay. You want to talk about procurement or Becky?
We need to ask one more.
Sure. So we released our invitation for bids on Monday, October twenty-eighth. Today, we have sent out the bid documents to six different vendors. The bids are due back to the district on Monday, December sixteenth. We did issue an amendment last week which extended that deadline. Previously, we were looking at Monday, November twenty-fifth, but this will allow vendors to provide us with a more comprehensive response to our package. The bids will be open publicly at that time. So we, we may have, in previous years, we have had bus drivers come and we've had the various companies come to, to see the results of those bids. This contract is a three-year contract beginning on July first of twenty twenty-five. Thank you, I don't know what year I'm in right now. And there will be two one-year options as well, well, for a possible five-year contract. We've included some non-performance penalties in the specifications. And then we've also included some specifications related to technology that I'm sure Keith would have more information about, so.
So, I mean, some of the things and things that we've talked about here, we don't have to collect it. We'd be able to get daily ridership data as one piece. We've included that as a stipulation of the contract as well as the ability to livestream video from, from our, from our buses. So that our principals don't have to wait for a download of a video. We can get a live feed and tap in to that. So I know the technology is available from the different things that I've explored and researched. It's there, it's a matter of making sure that it's all dialed in properly. So just from a safety perspective, those two things are huge, would be great advantages and improvements that we could make. So that's why those are included in the bid documents.
Can you explain, so I haven't been through bus transportation contract, Kamali and Roger may have. But what's the process, given that this is a three district bid process? And how does that timing work and kind of who has the authority and approval? Like, can you just walk through that?
So in the past, we did bring separate contracts to each of the school committees and had, had them authorize that. All three school committees will sign off, it would be one contract. At least this is how we had done it previously, where there would be one contract with the successful bidder. And then each of the chairs would sign off on the contract with that entity.
Okay, so we wouldn't do it in a joint meeting? We would each individually do it at our monthly? Okay. Okay. And so the recommendation of the best contract comes from?
So we, so I think the, so when the deadline to submit bids ends, do you want to talk about?
Sure.
Yeah, because it's a really exciting process.
Well, right, opening them.
It suits everything. We have a spreadsheet for it. So, so we do actually compile all of the bids and that would give us a sense for who is the lowest bidder. But it's not just the lowest bidder. There's also, it's our responsibility to check references, to make sure that they're actually a responsible bidder. We've also included some parameters in terms of submitting financials because we want to make sure that it is a company that is solvent and is not going to go out of business, as happened a few years ago with another bus company. So we've been looking at the full package to determine whether the low bidder is actually the one that we want to award that contract to.
So there are two separate, like the submit two separate.
That's with, no, that's with an RFP.
Yes, yeah.
So the bid has to be from a responsive and responsible bidder. And that's the things that we have to evaluate and make sure that their package includes. So all those stipulations that we've identified, you know, have, have to have evidence for that. And then as Becky mentioned, the financials are a key part of that to make sure that the company is solvent. So, you know, it's not going to be just open, open the packet, see the lowest price, and oh, there we go. We have, it's an intense process to go in to make sure and dig into those proposals to make sure that, you know, we do have the most responsible there. And then we might have to ask some questions or we might have to get some clarification. So we want to make sure that, you know, this contract is going to be, you know, fulfillable and in good standing.
And will we get those comparisons? Do we see those?
We can put together, we can do like a summary of the areas.
Okay. Sorry, anybody have any questions?
It's riveting stuff.
I know, like if anyone wants to come for the bid opening, it's riveting.
Well, I think also it's a question that I can have with the chairs. Do the chairs want to assign someone to participate in the process?
Okay.
I think that is.
Yeah, I mean, I think, at least from, and I guess I don't want to speak for everybody on this committee, but I think this is one of the things that we really have an opportunity to improve on.
Yes.
And, and I know, listening to the principals tonight, like, things are getting better. But from a school committee member, knowing the amount of time they're taking the central office team to deal with all the, like, we, like, this, we need to have a better management, meaning, not manager, not your management, the external vendor. And so I think it's extremely important that we pick, we get the right vendor on this.
We have a lot riding on this.
We do. And, well.
He would be here all night.
Are you making sure of it?
He would be here all night to use that one.
We, we agree, I think this is significant.
It is.
We can't keep doing what we've done for the past five years. It's not work, it's not work for families, it's not work for kids, it's not work for us in Southborough. So something has to change and this is our opportunity.
Well, and I also think where, where all three districts, like, once you're in, you can't get out easily, right? And if we're talking about a three-year and then plus a one, plus a one, I would have, I would have preferred to get out last year, right? Just because of the issues we were facing and it's just not an option. So I think where there's twenty of us that need to move in the same direction, I think this, this needs the attention that it deserves.
And what we can share from our perspective of managing the bus contracts and on a day-to-day, so that is insight we will provide all three committees because that is a significant factor of, of the next contract that we recommend of building. Because it's no less time from the central office team to manage buses on a day-to-day basis at the region than it is Northborough and it is Southborough.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, I have a quick question about that too. Is there anything, I think either at this time or as you get closer to that end of the process that you could share in terms of like, what additional metrics or what changes are you making in order to determine who's the best candidate for awarding this contract? Just so that people can understand, like, here's, here's what we're doing in this particular process that's going to be an improvement and hopefully yield, you know, the best candidate for this contract?
Sure. So I, I think that really looking at, making sure that we have the right questions that we're asking for references and that we're not just getting surface level answers, that we're really, I think, digging in deeper with some of these references to get, I think, more information about their experience with the bus company. I also think that looking at their response, like their responses in terms of, like their buses, their theory on technology. And then also the financials is another key piece, just making sure that we are looking at those thoroughly and that we have a good understanding of where they're, I think where they're headed as a company. I think one of the things that we're probably very aware of is that some companies have grown a little bit too quickly. And so it's impacted like the service that we've experienced and other districts may have experienced. And so just looking to see, is this company doing that same sort of thing and we're going to be caught short? So I, I, I don't know, does anybody think to add?
It's when, it's when we, when we write the procurement, I'd be, it's really making sure we have it really well articulated, exactly what we're asking for. And then so that our criteria is built into the proposal, what we're asking for. And then evaluating what we receive against what we ask for. And then it's a smaller look at the transportation world. So I think that, I agree, I think reference checks also because a company is the lowest bidder does not mean that we have to go the lowest bidder. But it does require us to have data and documentation of why we did it. And it has to be pretty clear and, and well-articulated.
That, that's a good, a good question that you asked, Lori, because that's where, that's where that deeper dive is going to happen. One thing that comes to mind for me is, and when we look at the prior bids that went out, we didn't get into detail about driver retention and recruitment and making sure that the staffing levels are proper. You would assume that would be automatic. So a lot of the things that we assumed would be automatic, hey, if you have thirty-two routes, it requires thirty-two drivers. We specifically stipulated that. And we also said there's a need to have substitute drivers ready daily for the purpose of callouts, sickness, whatever the case may be, so that we don't get into those daily struggles of who's going to do what. So that is embedded and that language was significantly vetted prior to going out. So as we look at it, we're going to ask for proof about how their attendance has been. And that's type of, that's where the deeper dive is going to happen. And that's, I mean, to be, to be honest, that's why things have stabilized. Is because we do have the fifteen, fifteen drivers in seats as much as possible, granted. And when they're out, there's a substitute driver that takes their place and that knows what they're doing. That's also stipulated.
Perfect.
Also turn-by-turn directions for the technology, so that if you do have someone that's not familiar, at least they'll be given that instruction and so it's, it's a safety feature as well. All that's included.
Thank you.
I also think we are, I believe we correctly come wrong, the first district in our, kind of our geographic area that has gone up to big. So we're ahead of district we're going to be keeping. That is positive for us.
Hopefully we get their best work.
How big is the pool of bus companies out there? I mean, it's not, it's not like we're selected from twenty different vendors.
Six, six, the six that reached out is frankly more than I thought would.
In, in all fairness, of those six, one is a bus company that I think manufactures buses and so is really looking to see what could be out there. And the other is an architectural firm from Syracuse, New York, that I still don't understand.
I don't think there are bus bids.
So, so.
But even so, having, having four interested is, is better than.
Yes, yes. Okay. Superintendent's report to the committee.
Sure, so enrollment and document in your packet as of October 15th. Just to note that in September, we, actually on August 24th, we were at 1,202 students. And then on November 24th, October 15th, we're at 1,203 students. So it's plus one. So it's been pretty, pretty consistent. Also in your packet is the Nezdek enrollment projections. So that is a very important report in terms of looking at projections for next year but also outward years. And it's been some time looking at the projections and looking outward to 2034, 35, and really looking at the Niri building project and that work to make sure that we are still in alignment with our projections and what we said the Niri building capacity would be. And I'm pleased to show that we're still well within what we were projecting. If you look at the next 10 years, enrollment will be pretty, pretty constant, consistent and no significant decreases or increases.
And what's the, is there a factor built in for a percentage increase in case we have like a?
Yeah, so, so we looked at, Nezdek uses fertility rate, so there, there is a factor built in. The RLS report that we kind of brought, built in mobility rate. So houses selling, people moving in addition to birth rates. So when we look at Nezdek enrollment projections that we received aligned to the RLS projections that we have, they're comparable and RLS built, built in some extra capacity based on mobility rate.
So, and RLS did, did, did an enrollment study three years ago?
So 2030 was the outward. At the time it was, I think, 2030 long enough to look.
So I'm just wondering if.
Were you asking when they did this thing?
Yeah. So, kind of, and I'm just thinking from like a Niri building perspective, should we reengage with RLS now that we're getting to? Because I, I know that's a topic of conversation is, you know, potential 40Bs coming in? Do we have enough excess capacity? And maybe we should have to?
I think the progress demographic that we work with RLS was very, very resourceful and he was easy to connect with and was always updating. So I think if we reached out, he'd be able to update unless he's in a larger business.
And what are your thoughts from a Niri builder perspective?
Look, I, I think that there's certainly no risk to getting a second opinion. I think it probably, not only is it, would it be viewed as responsible? I think it would be responsible. I don't honestly expect to, to see any surprises that come out of it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I don't think it'll be a huge expenditure to, you know, to, to be responsible.
And also at the MSBA also does its own enrollment.
Exactly.
I think that there are a lot of time and effort goes into making sure that enrollment data is as accurate as it can be. But I do think regardless of a, a building project, that having every two years or three years a third party or a second party come in and kind of parallel study just validates the data that we have.
Okay. And there was a lot in here. Did anybody have any questions?
I can just give you the, some history that when the school committee was initially going through, getting this type of data and analysis, he went through it with a fine tip comb and actually chose to go with this review firm instead of another because of their methodology. We found challenges previously, you know, shout out to our passport member, Katora Martin. She was very, took the lead on pointing us in the, in the right direction of what to consider. So, yeah, when I looked at it, I had a lot of, I don't know, reassurance in what, what I was seeing. I'll just say that.
Are you talking about the other firm?
Mm-hmm. That we chose this one instead.
Chose Nezdek or the other firm?
Nezdek.
Okay. I mean, what happened, you also may recall that we, there were some projections that came back, didn't really look right to us, I think.
Correct.
So we asked them to kind of take another look and make sure that they, you know, were, I guess, looking at some of the right drivers. And they did. They were very good about it and that's, and the result was, I think, I think, I think really what we expected. But it's not always going to be that way, so that's why it's worth, it's worth validation.
So we shared with Nezdek RLS, RLS's reports. And as a result of RLS's report, Nezdek changed some of its projections.
Right.
Yeah.
So Nezdek, the documents they were looking at actually helped with some of the RLS information that we were looking for.
And who, which company presented in a public meeting?
RLS.
Maybe we could, can we recirculate that? Like, can we just find it?
Yep.
I just think that would be helpful, like, just, because there was a, that was a very detailed meeting.
And we can make it available on the Niri building website.
Yeah, okay.
So also in your packet are the monthly budget reports. So I'm going to go to Becky.
Okay, so included in your packet is the FY '25 monthly general fund report as of October 31st. That report does reflect the first four months of fiscal year 2025. Year-to-date, we have expended just over $5 million. We do have encumbrances that total $18,718,000, which results in an ending balance of $527,633, or 2.18% of the overall budget. Last year at this time, we had $391,000 or 1.7%. And then in FY '23, we had $743,000 or 3.33%. So we're really right in line where we've been in the previous two years. I do want to mention that there are five new function codes. And I, there is a typo in my memo. I put four, but there are five. I can count, showing as over expended. The first is the school committee line. Second is travel teachers line. Third is athletics. Second is our special education legal services. And then our, lastly, we have our special education transportation. I have provided the committee with the reasons for those over expenditures and then where I am taking the funds from elsewhere within the budget. I just want to point out that the special education transportation overage is due to a projection, or rather, not a projection, but an encumbrance that we have made. We do have a new transportation for special education transportation. Did I just say transfer, new contract for our special education transportation as of July 1st? We have not yet received invoices for this fiscal year. And so some of the routing is being done a little different, so it differently. So it's more difficult for us really to come up with our, the projections that we would normally have on a given year. So we are encumbering that money just in case. However, we do not think that we are going to need it, but wanted to have it set aside for a worst-case scenario. But at this point in time, I do feel confident in where the budget is. And I would just ask the committee to vote to approve the budget until audit.
You ready for this?
Can I ask a motion first?
You may ask the question after the motion is made.
Okay, make the motion.
So I move that we accept the South Grove Public School District fiscal year 2025 budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of October 31st, 2024 until audit.
Second.
End of discussion?
Not on that part.
Okay, well, so you don't have questions on this one? You have questions on the next one, right? The next motion?
Yes. All right. All in favor? All right, five all.
So I actually have a question about the, the motion that Becky's looking for.
Okay, got it.
So first question is about terminology. You, you, you're calling these function codes. I kind of call them accounts, but is there, is there a sort of a legal term that we should make sure is in the motion to, to be consistent with whatever you need?
The function code is, yes.
So, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
That I'll make. So I move that we accept transfers from the function codes listed in our packets. There are the five function codes that are listed in our packets to fund the five over expended function codes listed in our packets in this fiscal year 2025 budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Did we do a, a transfer last month on transportation for special ed?
No, not on special.
But we talked about it.
We talked about it. I think I had alerted you that this was happening.
Got it. That was it. Anybody else have any questions?
$200,000.
Well, wanted to make sure we were.
Do it again. Actually, I have a tracking spreadsheet as to what's being approved each month, so, yes.
I figured. Did you have some? Oh, all in favor? Okay, five all. Thank you. Thanks, Becky. Grant update.
All right, so also enclosed into your packet is a full listing of the grants that South Grove has received from DSE in fiscal year 2025. Some of these grants have already been approved by the committee, but we wanted to provide you with a complete list as it stands today. I will say that these grants are mainly made up of federal entitlement grants and those include titles one, two A, three and four, as well as the IDEA special education and early childhood special education grants. In FY '24, those six grants totaled $499,920. And as you can see, in FY '25, we received $513,551 for those same six grants, which is a difference, an increase actually, of just over $14,000. The other grants that Stephanie has been, she has a grant problem, as she likes to say. So she has been very busy writing a number of grants that have been beneficial to the district, including one larger one, which is for comprehensive health and physical education standards and looking at those for the upcoming year. So at this point in time, I would ask the committee to vote to accept the grants as provided in your packet.
Any questions on any of those? Do we spend these down throughout the year? Or is it all, once you're done with that program, then you expend the funds?
So many of these grant, many of the federal grants, they do allow two years to spend those funds down. The smaller state grants, most of the time those are one year. So during the current fiscal year, we would be spending those down.
But it is a kind of as-you-go.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we rarely put federal grants, take two years to spend those down. Like, those are usually.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
These are federal grants that would be under the Department of Education.
Very interesting. Just thought I'd note that.
So there's something that, when we talk about our FY '26 budget, something that is a, is a potential budget impact is looking at our federal grants.
Roger.
So I want to make sure, since this last, this transfer motion is about the budget. And I stumbled a little bit when I talked about the five function codes. But I want to make sure that people are agreeing that what we voted on was we voted to accept transfers from the accounts listed in the packet to fund the five over expended function codes listed in the packet. And the reason that's important, so I want to make sure that gets transcribed correctly. Reason that's important is because there are more than five function codes that are doing the funding.
Understood.
The function codes that are being funded are five. For example, special ed has several function codes.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure the transcription comes up correctly. Thank you.
All right. We go with the, to accept the grants?
To the chair?
Yeah.
Can we find out, can we get an update as the, maybe at the end of the year or, you know, later in the year? I would like to know how we're using the hate crimes prevention grant. Sure? Just thank you. And if anybody else would like to know about how we're using something else, you know, feel free to ask.
The hate crimes prevention grant, just, we haven't actually officially gotten, there's going to be a, I don't think you guys have actually even officially accepted that, have they?
No, it's available tonight.
Yeah. Oh, it's tonight? Okay. So we, at any time, we'd be happy to get an update. I'm happy to listen. Anyone? All right, so I move that we accept the grants for a total of $603,607 as presented this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, revolving accounts.
Okay, and then lastly, the revolving accounts. So for food services, I just wanted to make a note that we are awaiting reimbursement from the state for some of our food expenses. So that is the reason why we are only showing about $14,000 in receipts year-to-date. I believe we actually saw some of the first receipts come through today at the town level. So we will be able to provide that update next month. The, there really has been no change in the facility rental revolving account since I last reported on that. And then I just want to point out for both the food services and also the extended day is that I had included a note on there that the, these figures really are, just include the salaries that are known at this time as well as the expenses that have already been incurred, especially since many of our staff submit time sheets. And so those hours may be variable. And then the food expenses, we are normally encumbering on a quarterly basis. So those expenses have not been fully encumbered for the upcoming year. So while those balances, those ending balances may look large, they will not be at the end of the fiscal year. And then lastly, on the preschool, we do continue to receive tuition payments from our families. Preschool account does not fluctuate all that much either because the expenses really are just salaries. And so those are known expenses. So as long as we are collecting the tuitions that we are expecting to, to see come in, then that account will continue to look really the same from month to month.
Any questions on any of the revolving accounts? Thanks, Becky. All right, draft capital plan.
Great. So I do want to start by thanking Alan and Roger for participating in a subcommittee meeting to review this draft capital plan. We did have made adjustments from the prior year to really include an update of what we're looking at for the Niri project. So it does reflect that accurately. The other thing that updates and accurately reflects is the Travier roof project, which is obviously MSBA, something we discussed earlier this evening, is included there. What wasn't included in your packet is a line for the Woodward School to do updates related to the early, to make it an early childhood center, just kind of a placeholder for that as we move through the Niri project. So that would be the only adjustment that we would make to what the plan that was drafted and included in your packet would include. And just as an estimate for that, because we really don't know what, what we're going to be looking at for that. We did put in a $500,000 expenditure for that to make sure we captured it accurately. So that would be the only addition that we've made to what you. So that would be the only addition that we've made to what you see in your packet there. The other focus of our.
What year was that?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yep. The other part of, the other part of the draft plan is to really look out that five year and see what all three of the buildings will need. Obviously, we've taken off all the things related to Neri, but we do have them crossed out and encapsulated in that way. But the other schools, you know, we do have capital projects that we're looking at for the five-year plan. So the focus of kind of tonight is to really look at FY twenty-six, what is really on our doorstep, and certainly looking towards out if the committee has any specific questions about projects that would be more long-term. So for the upcoming FY twenty-six capital plan, continuing to do some work at the Finn School on the floors, if you recall, last summer, we did do the hallway, down the preschool hallway. This would be an extension of that work, which would draw into some of the classrooms. So over the course of the next three years, we would be able to do probably two to three classrooms per year to ultimately take care of that hallway. That's why that's kind of graduated out that way. For the Woodward School, there's a couple of things on here. One is technology, infrastructure, and equipment. We did have some good planning done by Kathy Carminiani and John Parent, our Director of IT and our Director of Instructional Technology, taking a look at our classrooms, doing some assessments and evaluations, and looking at doing some updates, not only just to classroom projectors and displays, but also to some infrastructure like access points and servers and things of that nature. So that's what would incorporate that, and you will see that line, it added to each of the schools. And that would be an FY twenty-six request that we would come into. The reason why the additional air conditioning is TBD on Woodward, the capital planning committee for the town did authorize us to go forward with a air conditioning feasibility study for the Woodward School. Becky, myself, Principal Gucci, and Brian Fantoni have met with the engineering firm a couple of times, fine-tuning their options, so we will have a report relatively shortly that will not only include the different options that they see as feasible, but also some cost estimates for that work. So it has been a pretty engaging process so far. The engineer has been asking some good questions and has been doing a pretty comprehensive review, so I hope to have that report for you shortly. When we moved down to the Trotiere School, we did move up a roof due to MSBA's approval into the accelerated repair program. We also have the technology, infrastructure, and equipment added there, and that's, you know, increased simply because of the number of classrooms that would need to be addressed. That's why that number's larger than it is for the other schools. The other thing we did a placeholder for is air conditioning at Trotiere, certainly on the second floor. These would be more like window units that we did at the Finn School, so that's something we've captured and has been a part of an ongoing conversation about bringing comfort into our building. And probably the thing that rises to the most and is more of a higher priority is the stage curtain here at Trotiere. It's just showing its age. There's nothing in particular that happened to it in the last calendar year. We have done maintenance on it over the years, but between the rigging that's involved and then the curtain itself, it's just starting to show its age, and it would be nice to finally get that replaced. It is inspected frequently. It does require some things to be done, which we can handle, but a part of that inspection is that a full replacement has been recommended, but not required at this time. So once you kind of, as things kind of total down and roll through, the next layer of this is when we get into the Neri School, and we did update that figure as the eighty-one million for the new build of the four-grade school, so that is reflected in this most updated plan. What below that, the lines below it kind of show is that we have had a progression of plan. It's kind of unusual to have amendments during the summer and during the spring, but that's certainly reflected because of the Neri project and getting those updates. So that is the draft plan, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions about specific projects or kind of how this plan was laid out.
The window replacement for Trotiere, is that if plan is not approved, or even if plan is approved, just to get us through until, well, forget what I just said, right? Because that's Trotiere versus Neri, but is that to get us through until maybe some alternative, like, central air considerations, or once we do this, this is it, we're just going to stick with?
It would likely be something that, you know, what we're forecasting for, like, we did the project at Finn. It is not a twenty to twenty-five-year solution. It is more a ten to fifteen-year solution to get us by, whatever next phase that would be. I would argue that the same would be true for a Trotiere second-floor air conditioning project.
And usually, when you've given some updates, you'll show us a picture sometimes, just to like say, like, that's really helpful, because I like, I have a visual concept in my mind of just how bad something is, but someone else that's not, a board member that is not in that school, or hasn't been there, so I was just going to ask as a nicety, because usually we get these electronically, if you just hyperlink a picture, then we will, we might have less questions of you, of why the floors need replacement. I know, because I've seen them.
Right.
It might be. If it's, if that, if it adds too much to your workload, no, you know, but we're going to ask questions later.
Certainly not. I think what happened over the years with this plan is sometimes even those pictures became outdated, so it was a matter of just, okay. So it's almost like what would be even probably more helpful is, once we kind of isolate what those priorities are, we can do a deeper dive and showcase what that is.
Fair enough.
That would just help versus having twenty-five different things, if it was between five and ten, that would be helpful.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions on this? I have a question for Finn. So did you put this together with what Finn at a minimum needs right now, knowing that Finn may or may not be a school in two years? Like, can you just kind of walk through?
Sure.
Like, if this would look different if we weren't building a new, looking to build a new Neri?
Do you want to start? Okay. So one of the things we want to make sure we were clear about is there are needs at Finn. Finn was a renovated school back in nineteen ninety-eight. It is starting to show, and we already did a boiler there. So what you would see here is a lot of the items are ones that have previously already existed on the capital plan. We're keeping them now moving forward to make sure we're painting the picture accurately. When we get further out, like, you know, thirty-two, thirty-three, we're going to see more of those systems start to pop up onto this plan. So I would say that this list, although is, you know, good and complete for the moment, once we get out further years and we're getting to that twenty-five-plus timeframe that we've been out with that, you're going to see some more of those systems, especially things related to HVAC popping up on this plan with a little greater frequency. So it's good for now, but it not necessarily what will be for ten more years.
I can share a thinking too.
Okay.
That regardless of what happens with a Neri building project, if it does pass, that this building still will be an asset to the town itself, and we want to make sure that we're not neglecting it, turning over the building and pulling off on repairs that we know need to take place. We want to make sure that when, if we do indeed commission it to the town, that it's in good condition, or the best condition possible to leave it to the town to decide what to do with it.
Can I try to speak to, I'm going to try to speak to what you asked and make sure that I take what Keith said, I think, but in perspective. So the question, right, was, did, was the thinking, was there thinking about the fact when these, when these capital expenditures were projected, that it's possible that Neri would not be, sorry, that Finn would not be a school in a couple of years? I thought, am I misreading your answer? I thought what Keith may have been suggesting is, if Finn remains a school, there's going to be a number of capital requirements that are necessary for it. And so to keep these requirements on that capital expenditure projection, in some ways, will help make people understand that if we need to continue to keep that as a school, there's going to be a number of costs, significant costs involved in keeping that as a school. So if you take a look at the possibility that it wouldn't have to be a school, right, then we're not going to have to, then we, then we aren't going to have to, as a school, maintain those capital projects. Now, the town may very well do that, but that's kind of, that's moved on from us potentially if we do have a four-grade new school.
But I think what my, my question is geared at is, are there, so if you look at the next sheet that Keith has in the packet, are there items on here and above that would not need to be done?
Above being?
On the, on the approved capital plan?
Okay.
Are there items on there that would not need to be done if it wasn't going to continue to be a school? Or, so, so regardless of, so from a taxpayer perspective, right, it's important for people to know if it's, regardless if it's coming from the school budget or the town budget, it's still hitting your taxes, and we still need to maintain our buildings. So my question is, are there items on the capital plan for Finn that would not exist if we were not pursuing it, continuing it as a school, regardless if it's on the town or the school budget?
So are there items that, are there things that wouldn't be done if it wasn't a school?
Yes.
Because, even if it was a town building?
Yes.
I'm not sure that we can answer that, right?
The only thing I would say is that, and I'm glad you brought up that second page, because that's where we get into more like maintenance items.
Yeah.
I would say that if it was not going to be a school, a number of those items on the maintenance list would be removed, whereas on the capital list, many would be continued. For example, the roof.
Right.
Right behind Trotiere is Finn when it comes to roof vulnerability across the district. That's a, that's a great example.
Yeah.
One that would stay. You know, certainly the controls, anything related to controls, they're starting to show their age. If you're operating that as any type of facility, it's going to require that. There's nothing necessarily on the capital that is purely educationally driven.
Okay.
Whereas on the maintenance side of that, there are.
Got it.
I mean, I think like, for example, the playground replacement.
Exactly.
That is a hundred thousand dollars, and that might not need to happen.
Yep.
It's decommissioned. So that would.
But maybe it converts into a maintenance.
But it's your cell-side playground, too.
Correct, correct.
But does it, again, does it meet the requirements?
Understood. Okay. So you went at this, assuming that Finn's going to continue to be a school, and this, like, you, let's say, let's say Neri was not on the table, would you have additional capital items in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight that you would move forward if we knew Finn was going to?
That was the exact question I asked Brian and Clayton, and we did not have anything that would have landed on this six-year plan.
Okay.
And that's why I mentioned, the conversation did expand to an eight-year plan, where some of those items, you might have seen a longer list.
Got it.
Could you repeat that? The items that would not have been on the six-year plan?
So the question I asked when I reviewed this with Brian Fantoni and Clayton was, are there any capital items, if Finn were to function as a school for the next five years, that we would need to add on to this draft capital plan? And the answer was no, this was the list.
Okay. Got it. No, I think, yeah, no, I think this is great. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? And thank you, Roger and Alan, for your work with Keith on that.
I think my recommendation is not to vote this tonight.
Okay.
Because we need to add the Woodward, a couple, we need to do a few updates, we can vote.
Well, the five hundred thousand, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
We can update that and have it in the next packet.
Okay. So I kind of jumped to your maintenance plan, sorry.
No, it's.
Did you want to talk anymore about that?
No, no, actually, it's a perfect segue. So what builds off of the capital plan is the maintenance plan. This is not something that gets voted on, but it's simply an update of the things that we earmarked in the buildings that would not necessarily rise to a capital project-type thing. So you'll see things like furniture replacement cycles, maybe some carpeting that's not going to hit that highest level. We also see some repairs that are necessary, whether it's for the playgrounds and that nature. You know, nice, comprehensive list that Brian keeps up. We try to take care of some of these things as they become priorities through operational or revolving, depending on how the story goes and how things pop up. I do like the work that Brian did with this plan. It's far more comprehensive and in-depth than has been in prior years and has graduated properly. So I think between the new format of the capital plan and the addition of this being a little more comprehensive, we're getting a good picture of where our buildings are.
And we haven't seen this before, have we?
You have not.
Oh, okay.
So that was one of the things that came from our subcommittee meeting, is to make sure that this was included in.
Great. I think this is awesome.
Yep. Painting plans, things of that nature, are included on this list.
I mean, I am a little concerned with the deferred column.
Sure.
And I assume this comes from our operational budget maintenance fund account?
Correct.
Which we don't have, there's not, there's not a lot of funds in that account, I mean.
No, and what we make sure of is, as the cadence of the year goes, there are certain things that are required, whether it be inspections and things that have to be maintained and updated. Some of the things that land on this list are not necessarily things that would be automatic or one hundred percent necessary, but it's good to kind of quantify what they would be, and if we can, you know, graduate it appropriately, it's less of a sting versus doing something all at once.
Any questions on that? All right. FY twenty-six budget priorities.
So in your packet is the, the last discussion around the budget priorities, and there was one headline suggestion. I think the goal is really to continue the conversation around the budget priorities and make sure that these accurate results were trying to accomplish and have applied in this. So my, my recommendation is that the operational budget subcommittee is meeting on Monday, that the operational budget subcommittee take a closer look at the budget priorities to bring back to the December meeting for our votes.
Okay. And we're hosting a regular school committee meeting for that, too?
Correct.
Okay, so anybody that wants to join, that is more than welcome to on Monday.
Monday, twelve.
Yes. And then the calendar?
So we continue to add milestone dates to the calendar. I will share that the first meeting with the town administration, members of the SLF Board, members of the district management distribution team is happening next week.
I think seven-thirty on Thursday to the next.
Wednesday.
It is Wednesday. It is Wednesday. That's right. It is Wednesday. We've got an eight-thirty, and we've got a ten-thirty, so hopefully that'll be all.
And those are great meetings to share information between the different departments and get a sense of the town's budget landscape, share information about school budget, and we'll problem-solve and collaborate together.
Nothing on educational policy, policy development, personnel?
So in your packet, the personnel report as of November thirteenth, so we had one appointment, one retirement, and one relegation. But again, I think that the personnel reports for all three districts have been much less stacked in terms of movement and position, which is a good sign. And we will, so Dan Morrison, a longtime custodian at Trotiere Middle School, and Neri will be retiring in January, so we will make sure that we wish him well and thank him for all his years of service.
Great.
We can invite him to maybe the December school meeting.
Okay. Great.
He's getting out in time for the snow.
Yeah, no problem.
His timing is impeccable.
Good for him. All right, minutes. So we have operational budget subcommittee meeting minutes from October 8th, open meeting minutes, October 9th, and special meeting minutes, October 17th. Anybody have any changes on this?
No.
So I move that we approve the October 8th, the October 9th, and the October 17th minutes of 2024.
Okay, second?
All in favor? Five all. Thank you. And items for next month, we'll be talking about the FY '26 preliminary budget, have a retirement visitor coming in.
Would you want MASC conference update or do that at the joint meeting?
Whatever you want.
This summer versus, December 4th is the joint. When is this one?
I say we do it at the South Pearl.
Okay.
We'll have MCAS.
MCAS, January?
January, okay.
Capital plan approval?
Yep.
It requires a whole agenda item, but communication on snow days?
Yes. It will be not.
Fingers crossed. Yes.
So this might come under any other business that we have to discuss or, so one of the things we didn't talk about at all tonight were the school committee office hours, anything about that has happened. I mean, do we want to, we've had, we've had a couple, right?
Yeah.
And I guess that's, some of us have been there, okay? Do we have a view on whether or not they've been successful, we're planning to continue them? I don't think we have, do we have anything scheduled out just yet?
We need, we will have one in December, but we haven't set a date yet.
Okay.
I think we should do that one.
Okay.
And then revisit, unless?
Well, we can do it and re-
And talk about it.
Have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Could I also suggest that we add the Neri Building Committee presentation? We have a lot of designs, and the design team is working on it. I think it would be important to-
Okay.
Present to the committee.
And actually have, like, the architects or designers?
That they have their arrows from the street.
Okay. I also think we should, maybe as part of that, or maybe when we're a little bit closer to town meeting, figure out, like, where's, what school committee's role is at this point, and what? I'm trying to figure out how to word this.
What school committee's role is in?
Like, what we should be doing, if anything.
In the Neri?
Yeah. I think we need to talk about that.
Yes, fair enough.
Okay. All right. I think that's the most agenda items I've ever written down at the end of a meeting, so it was good. All right, we're ready to adjourn?
Public comment?
Oh, public comment. Raise your hand. Okay. I move for adjourn at 9:04.
Seven minutes.
All in favor? Thank you.